Okay, hi Tessa. Good evening. We've got Sandra Fran Marigan. Okay. We've got Matt coming in. Hi Matt, how are you? Matt, you're muted, can you unmute?
Matt? Oh, how's that?
Good, excellent.
Excellent, good to see you guys.
Good, nice to see you too. Um, when we are, we're gonna do another hearing, I think, before yours, that shouldn't take too long, I assume. And during that hearing, you can unmute again, you know.
Sure, no problem.
Might as well stay here now.
You've got it.
I like your, I like your design for the house, did you uh, kind of think about that yourself, or how did you come to that?
Yeah, it was a multitude of one looking at other things around the lake and then uh, online and then put a bunch of stuff together and gave it to the uh, house designer and they put it together for us.
Excellent.
Yeah, we like it.
Looks good.
Thank you.
Okay. We're waiting, we don't start until seven o'clock.
Yep, no problem.
And we need to have quorum, which uh, we don't have, we have four more minutes.
Got it. Hi Tessa.
Good evening.
Thanks for all the reminders, appreciate it.
No worries. Let me know if it's getting too annoying.
Oh, you're fine, thank you.
A two-minute warning.
They may be trying to get all the different materials organized.
Yeah, I did that for about an hour today after I talked to you. I'm surrounded by it right now. I know I always have to have at least a thirty minutes before I could prepare for one of these meetings, just putting things all around me and then making sure my computer is open so I can get things online too.
Yep. Yeah, I have not seen the decision draft yet.
Yeah, either of us, I'm assuming that it'll be here in about five minutes or less. I guess six fifty-nine, and then I also give a leeway of about five minutes usually for, to make sure all the members are here until we have quorum. I guess seven o'clock. I see I'm the only member here, okay. Hey Andy, good evening Andy.
Good evening Chuck, hello everybody.
Andy.
I think you and I Andy are the only members here right now, so we need to get one more person here.
I, I see a Jeff Lacy just connected, so he should be here momentarily, there's a Jeff.
Good evening Jeff. Okay, I have Jeff, let's uh, and there's Herb Gilmore, so we've got all members are present. Uh, good to see you all here tonight. Uh, I have, and please uh, anybody correct me if I'm wrong, I have seven oh one, I would like to call the meeting to order right now at seven oh one.
And if Pen Lilio wouldn't mind unmuting and saying their first name, I'm assuming that's their last name?
Uh, yes, um, I'm here on behalf of Andy Cloutier.
Thank you, do you mind telling us your first name?
Um, Eric.
Thank you.
Okay.
With a C or a K?
With a C.
Thank you.
I cannot see you, but are you, are you here in video or are you just here by phone?
Um, I'm here by video, I, I.
Okay, I just, for whatever reason, I can't see you, sometimes I can see twelve people, but right now it's only nine, I don't know why, but it doesn't matter. But I'll remember Eric, okay, um.
I can read the.
So, who wanted to read what you need to read?
Yep, of course. Following the governor's restrictions on public meetings, this meeting is being held virtually using zoom.com for a remote participation only. The public may access it following the instructions on this meeting's agenda posted on the town calendar. If despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide real-time access, the public can request a recording of this meeting by contacting the town clerk.
Okay, I uh, I see we have two sets of meetings. Uh, the minutes we need to approve, I believe they've all been circulated, one is December twenty-first, twenty twenty. And the other is January thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Could I have a motion to approve the December twenty-first, twenty twenty?
Motion to approve the minutes from December twenty-first, twenty twenty. This is Andy Berg.
Can I have a second?
A second, but I'd like to discuss both sets.
Okay, let's, can we just start with the twenty, December twenty-first?
Yes.
Okay, great, fantastic, alright, go ahead Jeff, say what you want to say.
Okay, so um, can I share my version of these minutes?
What do you mean your version, what you, what you received?
Yes, I have some highlighted, I have some highlighted text I'd like to talk about.
I have no problem with that, as long as Tessa can do it, you can do it together.
Yeah, I believe I've already set the, changed the setting so that you can share Jeff.
Okay, let me. Crap. Are we still there, okay, sorry, um, alright, share screen. See, this would be the, the, the December twenty-first.
Twenty-first, yeah.
Okay, share, here we go. Alright, so I'm, I take it up to the top, let's see. Okay, um. This, this may not be a correction to the minutes, this is when we were talking about if Herb could serve on, as an alternate, even though he wasn't designated at the beginning of the case.
Yep.
This is a correct recitation of, of what took place, but um, if we could address this later, um, I, I, I think that this has all been clarified by Donna, Bob Mitchell, and me in discussions that we've had outside of the meeting, so.
Can I, can I make a suggestion Jeff? Um, after the word restarted, right, my suggestion is you add a parentheses after that, and you know, and just simply state something. This statement has been further clarified, yeah, and may, at a later date and may not be completely accurate, something like that.
Okay, well that next section down sort of states that, the board will investigate this further.
Is that, where does that, was that in the meet? Is that a meeting?
That was in the original, yeah.
Okay, alright, alright.
So it, it, it states that we question this, this interpretation and that we're gonna research it, so.
Correct.
I mean, this is all correct, this happened at the meeting, this was a discussion at the meeting. Um, but the end result is that the, that the first part of this is not really correct, I mean Herb could step in, say if Andy or I or you became sick.
Yeah.
And Herbert attended all the meetings, he could step in, so, we probably want to, um, we probably want to discuss that as, as like a new business item or something else, just so we're all on the same page with it later.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, but I, I think these minutes are, are fine, the way they are.
Alright, so you seconded, okay, can we have a vote on, on this one?
I, I think he has another edit.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not quite done yet, um. Okay, um, so this next one here, I, I think again, this is correct. Um. Alright, I, I don't have to agree with it, but it's correct, um. Okay, um, this next one, per town council, a denial decision is written only, that should probably be by.
Oh, yes, yeah, thank you.
Let's change it to by.
By the number.
Is this, is this page four at this point, per?
Two, I think, oh wait a minute, yeah, two.
Two.
And we'll call that a friendly amendment, without objection, change it to by.
Okay, um. So yeah, that's fine, and then um, then this last one here, let's see, is that the last one? It is, the last one was um, concerning the, the agreement for continuations and and again, I, I think this is correct as, as stated, but, but warrants a little further clarification perhaps later as well.
Okay.
So we kind of understand how we're doing this.
Okay.
I mean, Jeff, do you think there's any added information that I should have to clarify it for the public in there?
Um.
Or is it?
No, no, I, I, I think that's fine, um. I think that's fine, if, if we can, if we can talk about it later, just to figure out what we're, you know, when we need to have one of these agreements and when we don't.
Okay, okay, we can do that on the old business.
Okay, I'm, I'm finished with my comments.
Alright, so um.
Thank you.
Does anybody else, does anybody else, Andy or Herb have any other comments? Okay, I'm hearing none, and I have no further comments, okay, so um, I'm gonna call a vote, um, we have a someone uh, moved?
I'm so moved, Andy.
And Jeff seconded, we had discussion, um, Andy Berg, what do you say?
Aye.
Jeff Lacy, what do you say?
Aye.
Chuck Damari, what do you say? Aye. Okay, so the ayes have it, all voting numbers have uh, uh, voted and it's, and the, it is a unanimous decision, um, as a friendly amended, okay, can, uh, are we ready to move on to the January thirteenth? Twenty twenty-one, um, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of January thirteen, twenty twenty-one?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of, as of January thirteen, twenty twenty-one, and this is Andy Berg.
And is there a second to the motion to approve the minutes of January thirteen, twenty twenty-one?
Chuck Lacy seconded, but what I, we discussed as well.
Okay, go ahead Jeff.
Okay, we're gonna share a screen again. This is it. Getting good at this. This here, okay. Okay, you all see what, what I have highlighted here, Damari reads the sixty-seven Lake Drive special permit ruling.
Yeah, the exhibit I read, the exhibit.
The exhibit, um, this should probably be Shore Drive, no?
I'm sorry?
Uh, should this be Shore Drive, it's the one across the lake.
Yeah, I think so.
Thank you.
Yes.
By the way, is, is it sixty-seven?
Yes.
Okay, sixty-seven Shore Drive, that was actually, it was an exhibit.
Okay.
Not, because it wasn't the whole ruling, the whole ruling is another page.
I'll make that correction also.
Yeah, just call it the exhibit, you know, one, yeah, which is, it's almost all of it, but there's, you know, most of, most of the rulings as an exhibit. Okay, alright.
Okay, the next one here, which I have up, um, presume everyone can see it, Lacy refers to Goldhurst versus the near court case and explains that according to his reading, non-conformity can be increased within the existing footprint.
Mm-hmm.
That wouldn't have been what I said, I do not believe, because that's not the point I was trying to make about that case.
Okay.
What do you, what did you say, do you think you said?
I can strike it, is it the easiest thing to, for me to just strike that statement?
Well, um. The, the point I was trying to make about Goldhurst was that, um, that even if the, um, even if, if the, the extension was, was within the footprint, an increase in height was, was still considered to be, um, um, an, an expansion or addition, in addition or, um, to the non-conformity, that's, that's what really what Goldhurst stood for, and that's what I would have been trying to say there.
Okay, so how, would you want me to say? Um. So the extension within the footprint would be an extension of non-conformity?
How about, how about, uh, the same, what you have there, um, after the word increased, um, if there, non-conformity can be increased if, if there's a, um, a greater height within the existing footprint, if there's a greater height within the existing footprint, how about that Jeff?
According to his reading, non-conformity can be increased if there's an increase in height within the existing, exactly.
Okay, we'll say that, that, I have, I call that a friendly amendment too.
And I concur.
So, can I just read it back just to have it accurate, okay, Lacy refers to Goldhurst versus the near court case and explains that according to his reading, non-conformity can be increased if there is an increase in height within the existing footprint.
Correct.
Is that, okay.
Looked at as a friendly amendment.
Okay, going down, let's see if there's anything else. Oh. Alright, so this, you see, you see where I'm at now here?
Yes.
Alright, um. So, so this is something that, that Martin said, and he may have said it.
Yep.
Um. He said it is disingenuous that Lacy can tell the applicant that he is okay with the project without the dormers and now be concerned about the height. Um. Uh, this is not an accurate statement of my position.
Yeah, I know, but that's probably an accurate statement of what he said, even though it may not be an accurate statement of your position.
Can, uh, yeah, I understand that.
I can strike it.
Well, I don't think, I don't think you should strike it.
I, I mean, I think that, you know, because the thing about the minutes is right there, I think a lot of things that were coming from, from all, all of us who were talking there, and the minutes are supposed to be sort of a recitation, rather than anything we particularly agreed with, you know, it's, it is, of the facts of how the meeting went down.
Exactly, so I mean, I believe he did say that, in fact, almost exactly, he said that, whether you agree with it or not is something, is a different issue.
So, so Tessa.
Yeah, there's a way to clarify.
Can we, can we state in tonight's minutes that I disagree with that statement, because that's not my position?
Well, let's do that under, um, try to remember this, Jeff, if you can just tag it, or, or anybody that can remember it, let's do that under old business, okay?
I, I think, could, could we actually, I'm just sort of thinking about this and I sort of feel like it would be, you know, because I'm wondering if this should be sort of tagged, sort of in, in the context of meeting about this during the next time we talk, um, with, um, the applicants and their lawyer, because I don't necessarily want to cover, um, parts of this, this, this case without the applicants and their lawyer here.
Yeah, I think that's true, yeah, I, I think it would be unfair, because they have a right to be heard, and that means they have a right to hear what we have to say. So I think that's fair, let's do it, let's do that on February eighteenth.
And just one other food for thought, which can be discussed at a future meeting, and Jeff is aware of because of the planning board, so the planning board has asked me to kind of change my formatting of the minutes and do more of a summary rather than a breakout of what, who said what. Um, so, if that wants to be on the agenda for the zoning board to contemplate, and I'm happy to present, send out an example of what now I'm doing for the planning board as an alternative formatting.
Yeah. Yeah, because I, I guess the issue is that, Tessa, you can't record what everyone says, because everyone's, you know, we talk the whole time, so, so you can't record what everyone says, so you're only gonna record some of it. So. Um, you know, maybe that's selective, or maybe it's random what you happen to record, but you get bits of it.
Yes, go ahead.
You get bits of it and pieces of it, but, but unless you record what everyone says, um, you know, it's, it, it, you know, there, there may be some discrimination at work, I'm not saying it's malevolent discrimination, but just discrimination on your part as to what you think is important. Um, and, you know, people may say things and you don't record them, and they think, they think it's important, so I'm not sure how to resolve that, but.
I mean, refor, doing more of a summary format might be a way to do, get at that.
But I may object to that, because I think more detail, especially in a case like this when it's lawyers.
Fine, yeah, I can, and I will say just for the, that I, this, because I was concerned about the content, getting the content accurate, and this, um, in a tense discussion, I did ask for the recording, um, for, from Grace, and I worked through that, and I'm not saying I still got every word, um, because I certainly didn't, but I did try and summarize, and there were particular times that people said, this is for the record, um, and at those points, I tried to get more of a closer word for word, so that might have been.
Yeah.
Might represent a moment where James Martin, I'd have to check back at the record again, but this might be a moment where he specifically said for the record, and so I felt, like.
Yeah. Those tapes, yeah, those tapes are part of the record, you know, those tapes.
If he said that, if, if he said that, it should be in the minutes, but, but I would like an opportunity at some point to, to respond to that, and I guess I'll just have to remember to do that.
Just, let's just remember to do it, and I'll try to remember it too Jeff, but, you know, February eighteenth is, you know, it's, it's a bit away, it's about three, three or four weeks from now, so let's try to remember it if we can.
Okay.
Is there anything else?
Uh, yes, uh, right here where I'm at.
Oh, thank you, another spelling mistake.
Yeah.
Oh. Yeah.
O R O L E, right?
Yes.
We can, we can rock and roll with the project.
O R O L E, friendly amendment, that's fine.
There's another one down here, equally friendly, um, ZBA wants to clarify whether is the associate, whether the associate member, you know, so probably take out the is.
Yeah, from the amendment.
Okay, that's it.
Alright.
Thank you for your close reading Jeff, I appreciate it.
Okay, um, alright, so we have Andy moving, we have Jeff second, we had discussion, uh, ready to vote, Andy, what, what is your vote?
I vote aye.
Jeff Lacy, what is your vote?
Lacy, aye.
And Chuck Damari, what is your vote? It is aye, the ayes have it, is, uh, approved unanimously with the friendly amendments as noted, okay? Um, alright, now, um, looking at the agenda, we're gonna go to item number two. And this is a continuation of a public hearing for a special permit regarding the application of Andrew A. Cloutier for construction of a prefab metal shed sixteen feet by twenty-four feet by ten feet with a concrete pad at eighty shore drive, twelve feet from the edge of the road and thirteen feet from the boundary of eighty-two shore drive, and that is case number twenty dash zero zero three. and that is case number twenty dash zero zero three. And I think we had a sense of where the board was going on this, and I think you were going to write something up, Jeff, is that right?
Yeah, but I, I thought we closed the hearing.
Yes, we did, we did.
We're in the decision phase.
Yes, we are.
Yep.
So do you have something?
I have a decision, can I share it?
Yes, please.
Okay, here it comes. Let me find it. Cloutier. Okay, can everyone see?
I see the beget in top of it, yep.
Okay, so, so here it is. This, you know, it's, it's a pretty standard decision, all the boxes are filled in. Hearing date, December twenty-first. The request, four point two dash two again, B two, uninhabitable detached accessory prefab metal shed, concrete pad, within the front and side setbacks from Shore Drive and the neighboring property respectively. So that's why they're coming under this section, because they have, they don't meet the the setback, two of the setbacks.
Yep.
So here are the plans, they're pretty informal plans, they're all in the application. But there, there are plans, plot plans and building plans.
Yep.
So here are the findings. Word, word finds a proposed accessory structure to be in harmony with the residential development in the Lake Wyola zoning district and not detrimental to the neighborhood because, and, and this is verbatim what we're supposed to find.
Yep.
There's no adverse testimony from parties in interest or anyone. There is an adequate fence and vegetated buffer between the proposed structure and the adjacent dwelling to the south. There are no dwellings behind the subject lot that would have their views of the lake impaired by the structure. Structure will provide additional storage space for vehicles, equipment and materials now stored in the open.
Okay, looks, looks okay to me.
So, so those are the findings, and then here are the, the draft votes.
Is that, I'm okay with this, Andy, do you have any comments on, in fact, Herb, do you have any comments?
I will let Herb go first if he would like.
I guess Herb is not here.
Herb might be muted.
Herb, are you muted?
Well, so I guess I can go for a moment, and if Herb comes back up, Herb is unmuted, here we go. Herb, Herb, Herb is now gone, Herb has left the meeting, so my, my, I will give my comments then, and those are that I have none. I think this is fairly straightforward, it's supported by the neighbors. I, I, I like the way it's written, and I, I am in favor of moving ahead with the special permit as written by Jeff Lacy.
Okay. All right, all right, so, go ahead, Jeff, go ahead, Jeff.
We ain't quite done yet, we're almost done.
Oh, very good.
There, there's just a couple of conditions, and I, I modeled these after the first field one that we most recently did, which was similar. So there's, I did, we just put two conditions on first field, so we'll put the same two conditions on, on here.
Yep, good, I like him.
And then that's, the rest of it's just filling in the blanks and stuff.
Okay, I think it's time, is there any more discussion needed here, because I would like to move, or have someone move? I'm hearing no discussion, can we have, can someone move to approve this special permit?
Sure.
Andrew A. Cloutier for the construction of a prefab metal shed at eighty Shore Drive.
Sure, so this is Andy Berg, I, I will make a motion to approve the special permit for the, the shed at a Shore Drive as written and as displayed.
And this is case number twenty dash zero zero three, do I have a second?
Second.
Jeff Lacy seconds the motion. I think, are we ready to call a vote, any objections? Okay, Andy Berg, how do you vote on this motion?
I vote aye.
Jeff Lacy, how do you vote on this motion?
Lacy, aye.
Chuck Damari, how do you vote on this motion? Chuck Damari votes aye on this motion. And the ayes have it, unanimous decision, the special permit is approved, and Tessa, is it fair to say that you will deliver this, I mean, I, I don't know, I mean.
I will need to get a copy from Jeff.
Okay, get a copy from Jeff, and then you need my signature, that can be done electronically, is that okay?
I'm not sure, I guess, I haven't done this part of the process before.
When we do the, normally, I, I am in-person meeting, I would be there, and I would just sign it. But in, in the situation like this, as you know, Tessa, you and I have signed electronically, and, and so I am authorizing you to sign my name in the space provided on the document electronically.
Does a decision from the zoning board have to go with the registry of deeds?
No, no, it goes, I think, where does it go, I think it goes down to these clerk's office, doesn't it?
With the clerk for twenty days.
Yeah, so give it, so with my electronic signature tomorrow morning, deliver it to the clerk, because you're going into the town hall tomorrow, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so deliver this to the clerk with my duly authorized electronic signature, and it sits there for twenty days, okay?
How are we going to get the electronic signature on there? I mean, should I, should I email it to you as an attachment, and then you physically sign it, and?
No, no, I'm, 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 you're going to email it to Tessa.
Okay.
And I am, I am now stating, as I have many times before at these meetings, I am authorizing Tessa to electronically sign my name on the document this evening, and, and, and then to, and date it this evening, and then to transfer the sign, electronically signed document tomorrow, when she goes to the town hall, to the town clerk, and she can give a hard copy to the town clerk. Okay?
It, it is a word document, right, Jeff?
It is.
Yeah, okay, then that should work.
Tessa, your, 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 your email is, is the Z B A, is that what?
It's just Z B A, it's zba@shootsbury.org.
All right, we're doing that now.
I have it open, so I should be able to see it come in.
Okay, here it comes. No, huh?
Not. Yeah, zba@shootsbury.org is what.
All right, my, my email is.
Oh, yes, got it.
Boom, you got it.
Just took a moment.
Good, okay.
There we go.
Great.
Yeah, I am going into the town hall tomorrow, I can move this forward.
Okay, let me, let's see, hold on for a second. We're going to go to the next item. I have to find a document, so please bear with me for a second. Nope, not the right one. Hold on. No, that's not the right one, it's not the right one. Nope. Okay, hold on, where is it? Hold on. Okay, all right, here it is, I have hot copy here, okay. All right, we're going to go now to item number three on the agenda. This is a public hearing for a special permit or variance regarding the application of Mark Burrowake, Mark, please correct my pronunciation.
It's Matt Baroic.
Burrowick.
It's Matt, not Mark, but that's okay.
Matt, okay. And for reconstruction of a house at sixteen Wyola Drive, this is case number twenty-one dash zero zero one. I will begin the formal part of this meeting, as I always do, as is custom, I will, I will read into the record, and this will become part of the record, the notice of virtual public hearing. Thomas Shootsberry Zoning Board of Appeals notices hereby given that the Shootsberry Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a virtual public hearing on January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one at seven P M. On the following application, the application of Matt Burrowick for property located at sixteen Wyola Drive for a special permit or a variance pursuant to sections six point one dash three C, semicolon nine point three, semicolon ten point three dash two, semicolon and/or other sections of the Shootsberry bylaw for the reconstruction of a neglected home with a new home. The proposed house will enlarge the footprint in height, but not encroach on the side setbacks, but will increase those setbacks from seven point six seven inches to seven point seven feet on the west side, and from five point oh three feet to six point three point three feet on the east side, copies of the application are available on the zoning board webpage at www.chutesbury.org, case number twenty-one dash zero zero one. I'm not, I'm going to, I'm going to dispense with the other portion of it and sign by me, okay? All right. Let me just poll members of the board, and, and all members of the board, including our alternate member. Have we all done a site inspection of these promises? I have done that, I did that late last week, has anybody else done that?
Yeah.
I have as well.
You did that too, go ahead.
Sorry, Jeff, I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt you, Jeff, please, please go ahead.
Yeah, Jeff, when did you do that, li- last week?
It was today.
Today, okay, and Andy Berg, you did that, when did you do it?
I also performed one today during daylight hours, so.
Herb Gilmore, do you hear me, I am muted, Herb Gilmore. Did you do a site inspection? Herb, did you do a site inspection?
Yeah, I'm having trouble with my connection, so I may go in and out. I'll continue to try to change locations, yes, I did.
And when did you do that?
Today.
Okay, all right, so we all have done site inspections, we've all seen it. Okay, now, a couple of things. You all have, everybody has a copy of the application either electronically or hard copy? Is that correct? Okay, and everybody has a copy either electronically or hard copy, or both, of the all the plans submitted, is that correct? Andy?
Yes.
Jeff, and Herb, you have that too, Herb? Okay, we'll, we'll get back to her on that later. Okay. Now, a few other matters here. I have, as part of the application, I just want to note, I'm not going to read them into the record right now, but they're a part of the record, and if it becomes relevant, then maybe I'll read them into the record, but I, I noticed that there's a bunch of people who were supporting this application, does everybody have all those letters?
They do.
And Jeff, do you have those letters?
Yeah.
Okay, and, and just for the record, and support, without reading it, is lot six one two, lot six one four, lot six one eight, lot six oh five, lot six twenty-two, lot six sixty-nine, lot six forty-five. And and I have a separate letter that was not not part of the application submissions, and I'll just read this one since it was different, I assume you all have it. Dated January fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, to the zoning board of appeals in my, and care of me, relevant to sixteen Wyola Drive. This letter was signed by Kathy and Joe Salvador fifty-one Merrill Drive, and it, it, it says, Dear Mr. Damari, we are writing to express our support of Matt B. regarding his application for a special permit or a variance pursuant to sections six point one dash three C, semicolon nine point three, semicolon ten point three dash two, semicolon and/or other sections of the Shootsberry bylaw for the reconstruction of a neglected home in our neighborhood. As neighbors Z B dash six six nine and Z B dash six forty-five, we are pleased to know that Matt is planning on rebuilding this eyesore property, and we welcome the improvement, okay? I don't know if, okay, let me ask Michael Petron, are you in a butter to this?
No, I'm not, I'm actually the design engineer helping Matt.
All right. Is Fran Marigan, are you here, Fran? I, I see you're on mute. Okay, probably just kind of hanging out.
Fran is in the butter. Fran's in a butter, Sanders in a butter, Joseph's in a butter.
Okay, all right. All right, Matt, I'm going to turn it over to you then, and, and I'm going to give you an opportunity now to, you know, we have your submissions, we've done site inspections, we have the plans, we have letters of support. Can you give us a presentation as to why we should approve a special permit in this situation?
No, that's, thank you guys for all your time tonight, nice to meet everybody. So just a little bit of background, Mike Inchoos himself, he's my design engineer on the project for me, working with me here. Just a little bit of background for myself, I've been on the, the lake my entire life, my family's been there since the nineteen fifties. So a lot of affinity to the lake, I met my wife at the lake, so a lot of reasons for us to be there as a family. And my wife and I, we purchased this property about a year and a half ago, and with the intent that we would have to rebuild it based on the state of disrepair that it's been in for, say, the last fifteen to twenty years. So we're at a point now where we have the ability to go do that, so that's why we're here for the special permit. A couple of the things that I did in preparation for putting this proposal together. We looked at a lot of different, a lot of different properties around the lake, as well as try to look at other lake designs, make sure we found something that would be aesthetic to the lake property and to the Lake Wyola neighborhood. We also wanted to, you know, improve our neighborhood, you know, this being, I hate to say it, maybe the, owning the biggest eyesore on Lake Wyola, I guess that's, I don't know if that's a proud thing or not, but we definitely look to, to improve the neighborhood for our, our friends and family up there. And we also want to stay within the bylaws, obviously, we took that into a lot of consideration as we designed the property. And then we also have a lot of consideration for the land. So one of the things we're going to do is helical piles versus a foundation and a slab to be less disruptive to the, to the earth, as well as replanting foliage, and we love trees. We want to take down the, the pines that are nuisance for myself and my budding neighbors, but we do want to replant those with some maples and blueberry bushes and things that will get a lot more enjoyment out of for a longer term period. And then the last thing that we did is we spent a lot of time talking to all of our butters and neighbors to really make sure that they understood what we were doing with our proposal, getting their feedback, understanding their considerations, so that we weren't going to, you know, disrupt any, any issues around, you know, the tight neighborhood or the tighter butters in our, in our specific area, and that's what those letters of recommendation and you know, support of our program and project was, that I concluded with my letter to you folks. So today, we're here to kind of discuss kind of the special permit. You know, it's the nonconformity of the side setbacks is why I'm here. It's the, that's when I talked to Jim Hawkins, the building inspector, he noted that's what I needed to discuss with, with you all. And we were going to try to improve the side setbacks a little bit, you can't, we only have so much room on these tiny lots on Wyola, they're only forty feet wide, so you're kind of stuck in some regards. But we wanted to build a property that, you know, met the aesthetic of the lake, also suits what our family needs are on the other property that's there today. So that's kind of what we have.
Okay, so, so I, I think I read it correctly, please correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, but the side setbacks that are presently encroaching and, and under your proposed design, it's going to be a less of a, a greater nonconformity or less nonconformity?
It's going to be a little less nonconforming, so to read it back to you, the west setback today, it's at seven point six seven feet, with our new proposal will be at seven point seven, so we gain call it, you know, three twelfths of an inch there, not, not a ton. But on the east setback, we're actually a little bit tighter. Today, we're about five point zero three feet, and with our proposal will be at six point three zero feet. So my neighbor on the, on the east side, the crows, you know, gives us just a little bit more room in between, and also the removal of the trees, we're actually going to end up with more yard between the two properties than what we have today. And then we're going to go back and plant maples later on strategically, you know, that we both agree upon.
What is the present height of the structure?
The present height, I, I'm not exactly sure, I think it must be around eighteen, sixteen, eighteen feet, somewhere in that range. It's a it's a plus of a story and a half today.
And what is the proposed height?
Today it's sitting at twenty six point two. Depending on how we flush over now, we're going to the helical piles. That may go up or down by twelve inches depending on how far those have to stick out of the ground, but we we would never go past the twenty eight feet that's in the other bylaw.
Excellent. All right, um.
No, nobody behind us really with a. A view. Um, uh, the yarmax are behind us as well as the snows. And uh, and neither of them, it it won't impinge anybody's view to the lake where we are.
And you've discussed the project with them as well?
Yep, they they all wrote the letters of uh support.
And they're.
Included in that a butters diagram, I think I sent to you folks, all the lots with a star. That are all the ones in and around the circumference of the the property that we own at sixteen Yola. Just so I could kind of demonstrate that we wanted to make sure we touched as many people as possible where there could be a potential problem. And uh, and all of everybody was in great support and uh, you know, open to our proposal that we have.
Okay. All right, um. I have, I've asked the questions, at least my preliminary question, so I'm gonna. Turn it over to our members, any any members uh. Including you, Herb. Um. You can ask questions of the applicant at this point in time. Does anybody wanna volunteer to go first?
I'll I'll ask one.
Sure, okay.
Uh, are are you aware, and and I I see Fran is on here, are you aware of of what? The offhand, what the height was on the the Marigan project from a few years ago? It's a couple doors down from you.
I think that they're around twenty four feet, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
At least that's what I had from my survey results. They looked at the heights of some of the other buildings.
Okay, Jeff, do you have any other?
Yeah, man, it was it was twenty four feet high.
Was it? Okay, thanks.
Who's speaking that? Who said that?
Oh, that uh, Mike Petron. I have the site plan up and I was just looking at the survey. It was twenty four feet for Marigan's property.
Okay, great. Excellent. Thank you. Note that in the record, Tessa. Uh, Jeff, do you have any more questions um? Concerning Matt, at this time, there'll be other opportunities, of course.
Um, not at this time.
Okay, Herb, do you have a question?
Herb's on mute.
All right, yeah, Herb, you you can ask a question too, if you want to clarify anything.
He's not showing to be muted.
Yeah, that's weird.
Yeah, I hear you, Herb. I hear you.
He's trying.
Nope.
Anybody read lips?
With all the Zoom calls I'm on, I'm surprised I can't.
I I hear you. I hear you. I hear you, Herb. Do you wanna ask a question? You don't.
No.
All right, go ahead, Andy. You wanna ask a question? We'll come back to you later, Herb, if you want. But Andy, you have a question?
Um. I, you know, I I I I don't know that I um. Exactly do at at this time, no. Um, other than whether there are um. You know, uh. At some point online, it would be good to hear if there's anybody here who who is, who would like to speak, who has not written a letter. Um, and that would just be a good, you know, something I'd be interested in.
Yeah, is anybody here on uh, are any of butters here? Uh, whether you wrote a letter or not, are there any butters here that wanna be heard on this? Is it, I'm not muted. Everybody's hearing me loud and clear, I assume.
Yeah, this is Nick and Sandy Yarmak, eighteen Yola. Uh.
Okay, go ahead.
We're in fully a agreement of of the other project.
Okay, and where are you uh?
Eighteen Yola.
Okay, you're right beside them, exact, right?
Right beside and behind.
There's a west and it's to the west and to the north.
If I, if I am uh, have have the lake to my back and I'm looking at the subject property. Uh, you are to the left, is that correct?
Correct, to the left and to the rear.
Left and to the rear, okay, and you have no objection, you support this project?
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent, okay, hundred percent. Note that in the record. Anybody, any other butters? Here that want to speak? Either in favor? Or in opposition to the project?
I I'm for it too.
Who's, who are you?
Joe Salvador.
All right, Joe, uh, where where are you located, Joe?
I'm next to, I'm next to Nick Yarmak.
So next one to the west, to the left. And behind as well. He has a lot behind us as well.
Okay, all right, and you're a hundred percent in favor, is that fair to say?
Definitely, get rid of the, get rid of the eyesore.
Yeah. You understand it. All right, any other butters here tonight that want to speak in favor or in opposition to the project or. Express any other concerns? All right, let me go back to Herb. Herb, do you have any comments or questions, Herb, since you?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I hear you loud and clear.
Yeah, somehow I finally got connected. Okay.
I hear you.
Good job. Awesome.
Uh, I counted the number of trees that you wanted to remove, and if I'm correct, it was, it's nine trees?
It's all, it's all the pines on the uh, on the uh property, because it's all the softwood. And right now, they they create a lot of havoc with them. They drop all their needles and they're, some of them are decaying as well, so they're gonna need to be able to be removed. So the idea here is when we talked with Concom is. We love trees. My wife's a tree lover, so uh, we're gonna replant with maples, you know, some sugar maples, things that be a lot more sturdy over the long period of time is what we want to do. And then between us and the eastern side, there's a proposal put in two segments of blueberry bushes between our two, our two uh, properties as well. Since we're, since the size of the footprint, we want to increase more foliage on the site. And uh, and quite honestly, by taking out those pine trees, it's actually gonna improve the view for anybody that is passing behind the house as well, so it's gonna be better for everybody. And everybody's in support of that as well.
Well, I I really just meant to ask the one question.
Okay.
Well, are you, are you taking down nine trees?
The answer is yes.
All right. Uh, and my other question was, what, what are you using the uh renovated structure for?
It's gonna be a, it's gonna be a residence in Chutesbury.
A one family or?
One family residence, yes.
And uh, I suppose you've worked out, although it's not our business, the the whole septic issue's been worked out with.
Department of Public Health. Yeah, we talked to the Board of Health. Mike can comment on it if you want more information, but it's in that area because of the level to the lake, the only thing that's allowed is a tight tank. So it'll be a two thousand gallon tight tank that'll be within the setbacks that we need to uh, to work within. And that's what everybody in that, kind of that corridor has because of the uh, there's no space to put a real septic in and you can't get the elevation.
Yeah, it's it's ground groundwater issues uh primarily, as well as lot sizes in this in this location, but yes, Matt said it all.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, are you all set, Herb?
All set.
Okay.
May I ask one more question, Chuck?
Go ahead, go ahead, Andy.
I just was wondering, um, could you speak a little bit, just about what 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 parking is gonna look like for you all?
Yeah, so the way that it'll be set up is we're gonna have two gravel spots. Basically, we can park uh in behind the house, so there'll be uh plenty of parking. We're set up right now for at least two spaces. The way that the engineered system, that the tight tanks can be designed, we could also drive on top of that as well. So there's, there'll be plenty of room to park.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, it's just an observation. I I think the tight tank is a good idea. Um. On on that site, that will probably. Probably limit the extent of 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 use and and um. Maybe keep it a a seasonal cottage. If those are expensive to pump out, but um, so I I think that's a a good way to go. Uh, question, the house is gonna be slightly narrower. Um, but it it it's it's gonna be a little bit longer front to back.
Correct, it's still gonna, it's still gonna meet the uh, the four and a half setbacks. To be able to fit everything onto that site, we're behind the twenty five mean setback from the lake, and then the same thing from uh, from the rear. And Mike's the mastermind behind engineering, getting everything on that site so that it meets all the setback requirements that uh, that we have proposed. Yeah.
Okay.
Jeff, any other uh comments?
Uh, not this second.
Um. Okay, does anybody else want to say anything else before? Um, I asked uh uh another question of Jeff Lacy, who's leaving, I guess.
Well, I just had another question, Herb Gilmore here, just another question about. Uh, the number fourteen uh did not. I mean, they seem to be somehow. Affected by this, but yet I didn't see any letter of support from from fourteen.
What is fourteen?
Yola.
That's right, on the other side, when I'm my back to the lake. Uh, we see eighteen on the left side, fourteen is exactly uh. To the right side with my back to the lake.
Yeah, so what, the crows did send over a letter. It's in the packet that I sent. To you all, and I can.
Okay.
Okay, so we're talking about the corner lot fourteen.
Um. Oh, the mart locked is Z B six fifteen.
Z B six fifteen, and there was no star on it, so I just wondered if they had.
I just don't, I I don't think I know them. I don't think I ever met them, to be quite honest.
Uh, fourteen, oh, oh, I see. Fourteen Yola is um, is five one two.
It's one of the larger properties right on the, on that road.
Yeah, it's 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 on the other side of the street, went down a bit, and that's Z B six one five. And 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 fourteen Yola Drive is six one two. Just just to clarify what it is.
Six sixteen and six fifteen. When we are two lots.
Yeah, two different lots.
That's us.
I believe that's us, at eighteen Yola.
That's ours, those are our two lots.
No, I see eighteen Yola, you're Z B six one four, aren't you not?
But we also have a lot.
Yeah, you probably know better than I do, Chuck.
So you're you're looking, yeah, you're looking at six one five. Yes, we, I I actually, I don't know those people. That house sold. Oh, probably four or five years ago, and I I've never met the people in six fifteen.
Oh.
I I I know the people in six oh seven. Those are the Galinski, so I I did talk with them.
Right.
Um, and then, you know, the Marigans, they they own six thirty three as well. That's the other corner. But no, I I don't know, I don't know the folks on six fifteen.
Neither do we.
Okay.
If they're not here and they and they certainly received notice, I assume Tessa, they're within the three hundred feet, of course, right? Tessa?
I I could double, I don't know all the list on top of my head, but I did mail out.
Yep.
The notices.
It appears.
Sure, six fifteen is Alan and Hen- Henry and Kelly Allen. From uh Amherst.
Henry Allen, you say?
Okay, it's a Henry and Kelly Allen. And they're from Amherst, so I'm sure they must have got the uh, the hearing notice for sure.
I'm looking at the butters list, um. Hold on. Yeah, I see them. They they definitely got notice.
Yep.
Henry Allen and Kelly A. Allen. Okay. Interesting, okay. All right, um, any other comments, Matt, uh, or Mike Petron, do you wanna make in support of the application?
May I ask one more question of the applicants?
Go ahead, Andy.
Could you please tell me uh, the finished square footage of of um, of the building when it, when it's set?
I think when it's said and done, I think it's about eighteen hundred square feet.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, any other uh? Members of the zoning board or applicants want to uh say anything else? Jeff, um. Let me ask you a question, Jeff. This uh, section six point one dash three C apply. And nine point three, what what is your opinion of what provisions? We should look at this under?
Six point one dash three. The.
See?
Yeah. And it's um.
The zoning board of appeals may grant a special permit to allow such reconstruction, extension, structural change, or major exterior alteration. Of a nonconforming structure or expansion of a nonconforming use, provided that the board finds that such. Reconstruction, extension, structural change, major exterior alteration or expansion. Is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure or use. Oh, uh, that's what you believe, that's the uh?
Yeah, um, there there are these, there there are these examples that we have in these illustrations in.
Do you have an opinion of if any of them apply?
Yeah, the.
Go ahead, tell, please state that.
Uh, you know, on on the bottom of my page twenty seven.
Okay, hold on.
It.
No, no, twenty. I can't, you have a, uh, I imagine you don't have an updated copy. Which which one is it?
Okay, if if you, if you go from the one, two, three, four, five. Six, seven, eight, it's the ninth, it's the ninth example.
And it, does it begin with uh, an alteration within a setback that does not increase the overall height? It's not that, right?
It might be the one down from that.
The one down from that, okay.
The one before that, an alteration that increases the overall height of the structure.
Okay, that's the one, okay, so hold on, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Nine, okay, that one, the second to the last one, right?
Yeah, so.
Okay.
So really what's happening is the, the portion of the structure that's with, that is. Um, within the setback, violating the setback on both sides is is being increased in height.
Yep.
And and it says this alteration requires a special permit. And then, then you you go back to um, six point one dash three C. And um, it tells us what we're supposed to do. And we're supposed to find that such reconstruction, extension, structural change, major alteration or expansion. Is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure or use.
Okay, so. And, and also in granting such a special permit, the zoning board of appeals shall not be required. To consider the special permit review criteria contained in subsections nine point two dash two.
Yeah, we just have this one thing to consider.
Okay. All right, um, so are we all on the same page? Uh, Andy, Jeff and Herb, that this is the, Jeff recited the appropriate um, sections. Of six point one dash three and the appropriate example. Does anybody disagree with that?
I agree.
All right, agreed, Jeff, that's Andy Berg agrees, Jeff Lacy obviously agrees, Herb Gilmore.
Yes.
Agreed, he agrees and I agree. Okay, um. How does my, how do my members feel about additional fact finding, or are we all set?
I I mean, at this point, I I I I feel um. That we have of a reasonable um, set of facts, um. You know, particularly given the state of the the current cottage.
Okay. Uh. Do you agree with that, Herb and Jeff? Do we have, do we, do we, do we need any other facts? Do we understand what's what's going on here?
I I think I have enough facts.
Okay.
In including what I. It, you know, what I saw today on the the field visit.
Yeah, yeah, we're taking into consideration the entire record, the application, all the plans, our site. Our site inspections, our various site inspections, all of the letters. Are there any additional facts that we need before, go ahead, Jeff?
So um. I'm I'm just a question about what should be included in the special, the record, the special permit record, which is where we're at now.
Yes.
Um. I mean, I I made a number of observations on my field visit. Uh, which will inform my decision ultimately.
Okay.
Should those facts be recited now in?
Yeah, I I I think they should be. I think they should be recited if there's, because obviously. We did four separate site inspections and, and and if uh, if there are facts that are important. We we should state them right now so others. Could weigh in.
Okay.
And Jeff, since that's, you're gonna read them, if you could get me a copy somehow, either by scanning them, if they're handwritten or emailing, if it's typed.
Okay, it's 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 pretty brief. Well, yeah, tell me if you need more. Um. Okay, I found. I found that the um. Uh, you know, looking at at this cottage and its neighbors. I found the side setback to the east to be about nineteen feet. And not the side setback, but the distance between structures. And. To me, that's fairly important because that's, you know, that's how close the houses actually are to each other. And then uh, on the west side, about sixteen feet. So that um. Those distances are are more than than some of the others that we've considered recently. There's. A little more spacing between the. There's a little more spacing between the the three houses. When I looked to the rear, looking for other residences that that might look in the direction of this property for their view out to the lake, I found a few back there. The the back portion of this property is not is is not very well developed. And the one house that's kind of in the back is way in the back. It's it's quite a ways away. I found that some of the houses, like one, like one house in particular that's right behind this one, doesn't have a view of the lake as it is now. So they really have nothing to lose because the property's flat there. You can't really it's not at an angle that you see over this property. So so that property has no view now, so there they would still have no view even if the house went up. Some of the other houses that are in the vicinity seem to have their own view corridors to the lake that don't necessitate looking over this house. So their their views wouldn't be affected. It doesn't appear. I I also note that there are no objections in the record and that the only responses we've received from the from the parties in interest or or the immediate neighborhood is support.
Okay.
That's what I've.
Any other comments by any other members? You can comment to Herb if you'd like. Andy?
I mean, I think the only other comment that I I would have to offer is that I I I think it is just at the very least worth remarking on the state, the current state of the property, which is to say that Matt, it's a lovely property, but it needs some work in its current state. And so I just think that should be, you know, you know, a part of our deliberate, you know, part, that's part of the deliberative process.
Like I said, I'm not sure if I'm proud to have the worst looking house in the lake or not, but needless to say, it's a beautiful piece of property. I can't wait to live there.
I I would agree. It's a absolutely beautiful location, but I I don't want to understate it, but it is hideous.
It's been in this repair for for a long, long time and, you know, that was our full intent when we bought it was to we can improve that neighborhood and improve it for everybody around us and get many years of enjoyment out of it.
Do you have any idea when it was built?
I think it had to be like in the forties or thirties. I mean, it's a long time ago. It's built on stumps. I mean, you you guys saw the outside. Don't even go inside.
Yeah, I didn't even want to go.
I think it was nineteen thirty eight.
Was it?
Yeah. Yeah, Hurricane of thirty eight, probably right after the hurricane.
It's an oldie.
Herb, any comments, Herb, about your observations?
Uh, no, nothing more than has been said.
Okay. All right. I I'm failing and 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 if if you're not feeling this, let me know. I'm failing. We have enough information to start thinking about closing the fact gathering investigation part of this, we stopped thinking about it. Does everybody agree that we can at least consider that at this time, or are there any other additional facts or reports that we need?
There's only one thing. I I just have one more question, Chuck, if you don't mind. I'd like to ask.
Please, please.
You do a nice job writing up these findings and, you know, what you would, assuming if we move forward at some point here. The height I have today at twenty six point two feet.
Yep.
You know, depending on how those piles work, the helical piles, which I still need to have that that engineered for the for the substructure.
Yeah.
I I don't know the exact height of those yet today. Are they gonna protrude from the ground at eighteen inches? Are they gonna protrude at a foot? Now, I didn't know, what what happens if I go from twenty six two to twenty six eight? You know what I mean? I want to make sure that I stay within whatever the guidelines you guys recommend.
Matt, maybe I can answer that. Is that when when you go to go pull your boat, your building permit, you're gonna have to have that figured out before you can get your permit. So it's it's it has to stay below the twenty eight feet, or the building inspector is gonna kick you back to the zoning board again.
I I just knew that we're in that that midst of, you know, they're gonna come in, engineer it, and I want to make sure, I say, we gotta keep the structure below.
And in my opinion, yeah, that's that's a non-issue because, again, the the building inspector is gonna either send you back to the zoning board because you can't meet height, or you gotta come back, so.
Yeah, under no circumstances can you go above twenty eight, you know, and start getting into deliberations. I'm gonna recommend that that's an explicit condition of this. That's the under twenty eight or no more.
I want to be, I want to be, I want to make sure I'm doing exactly everything that I'm supposed to.
Okay. So again, back to my original question to my members. Are we, are we there in terms of any other facts that we need to begin deliberating? I'm seeing Jeff doesn't seem shaking your head no. Andy, same thing?
No additional facts that I need in this in here, and I would be in favor of moving ahead.
Herb, you need any other facts? I don't need any other facts. So I think the four members are in consensus. We don't need any other facts. Can I get a sense without, no binding, no binding here, but can I get a sense of of how we might vote? We're not voting, but how we might vote, just for purpose, so that I can start hopefully delegating this and and coming back to a future meeting, whether it's February eighteenth or in March, with with a proposed decision. How are people feeling about this?
I I might vote in favor.
Okay.
And I I would, I also might vote in favor.
Okay, I might vote in favor. Herb, I know you're not gonna vote, but you might vote. You never know. Someone might get sick.
Yes, I might. I might vote in favor too.
Okay, so we have four people that might that are attending to want to approve the special permit. So I like to go back to our scribe. Jeff, could you write something up for our future meeting? Whether it's, I don't know if we should do it on February eighteenth, which is our next meeting, or we should kick it to March or some other date in February. But what do you say, Jeff, about that?
I I could certainly have it prepared by the eighteenth of February.
Okay.
We we do need to get out of the public hearing tonight, though, probably.
Yes.
Right. I'm gonna do that, but I just want to make sure that if everybody, before we do that, I want to make sure we're all comfortable about putting this on the agenda on February eighteenth. Are we comfortable with that? Which is, we already have a meeting that night. Are you comfortable, Mark, Matt? All right, Andy. Yeah, Herb, you're comfortable. Okay. All right, so let's does someone want to move to get out of the fact finding, fact gatherings section and 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 close the public hearing? Move to deliberations. Someone make make that motion?
I would let Jeff if Jeff would like to.
You want to make that motion, Jeff?
I I I will move that we we close the public hearing tonight on on this project.
Okay.
What is it, twenty one double oh three?
Uh, no, it's twenty one double oh one.
Okay, twenty one double oh.
It's the first one. This is January. This is the first one of this calendar year.
Yep, so I I moved that we closed the.
Do you have a second?
Seconds.
Okay. I want to move to vote. Is that okay? Okay, I'm moving to vote. What say you, Jeff Lacy?
Aye.
What say you, Andy Bird?
Aye.
What say you, Chuck Demari?
Aye.
This is unanimous. So we are out of the public hearing. We are in deliberations. Jeff's gonna draft a draft decision. And we will present that either on February eighteenth or if you can circulate it before, great. Either way, it's fine. Okay.
Chuck, would you let us know when when you decide to to reconvene?
Yeah, we are. I'm telling you right now.
I apologize. I thought you were moving on.
I'm not, you're probably gonna be second on the agenda. Laughing aside, we'll we'll figure that out later, but it's gonna be February eighteenth.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead. Ma- Megan and Dave?
Steve.
Dave, go ahead, Steve.
Can we go second on the eighteenth, please?
You want to go second? Okay.
Yes.
I'm gonna put, I'm gonna put this first on the agenda. And after the approval of minutes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, you know, we'll have this case dealt with, and then we'll put Steve and Megan's right after that.
Excellent idea.
Thank you.
All right. All right, excellent. Thank you for weighing in. That's important. Let's go back to the agenda. I have to get it in front of me. I think I'm only doing it by memory right now. Education and guidance. Is anybody here for educational guidance?
So if if you guys are all set with with myself and Mr. Borwick, we're gonna jump off the meeting if that's okay?
When it gets closer, I'll send you the link.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Take care.
Thank you, everybody, for your time today. Thank you.
All right. It doesn't appear that anybody wants any education or guidance. We have some new business on the agenda.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Sure, I said a quick, I I said a quick question for guidance here. We we submitted a special application, a permit application, and we we told, we were told we can't go over the the height that we requested. Yet on this one, it looks like they're asking they submitted for something, and then you're gonna grant more than that. How does that work?
No, 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 we, it's a question of how it was written up. And in this one, we knew it was gonna be reconc, it was gonna be completely demolished and reconstructed. And when it was reconstructed, they gave us plans, which we have. And 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 it wasn't anything, you know, it's understood that this can't go above twenty eight feet.
Okay, I'm just confused with everything, so.
Well, it wasn't in the applicant, it wasn't, I go by how it's written. So yours, for example, Steve and Megan, when I write the public notice, I take that from your application. That's what I do. And and that's what I did in this case, too. I took it from their application.
Okay. Okay, I got, thank you.
Okay, great. I think you made a point in your application with the with the exact height. Okay, so I I made a point.
I was told to.
Yes, it's a good idea. New business, end of the year report, Tessa, I, you know, I would like to delegate that to you. I did read the one from last year that was written by Linda Ava Scott. And I think it was, it was great, wonderfully done. She did a great job, and I I think you have enough information that you can use that as the model and and write it up. When does it due, Tessa? The end of the year report?
As soon as possible, basically.
Okay, so why don't you write it up? And if you let me know sometime, you know, before I write the agenda, if you want me to put that, well, it could be just back on new business or old business. If you want it, if you're gonna submit it to us by the eighteenth, just let me know, okay? And I'll put it on the agenda as a separate item, all right? Now, I think if I recall correctly, was there other new business? I mean, we have, we do have this other new business. Well, it's on the agenda. So let's, let's go to this other new business that's on the agenda. Again, it's the filing fees. This, the hearing we just had, the filing fees were six hundred and ten, six hundred and twenty dollars, something like that, but it was certainly about five hundred dollars. So I just want people to start thinking about, maybe again, raising these fees. I'm not really sure what's going on and why. I I think there might have been an extra sentence in this one, but not much more than one extra sentence. But maybe, Tessa, I don't know if you're comfortable or if the town clerk is comfortable, someone could call the Gazette and see what's going on here. I mean, I know a big part of this is that extra language. I know that. But I don't know why the other ones have been coming in around five hundred, five ten, five twenty, and this jumped up to six ten or six twenty. I don't know why there was an extra hundred dollars for one sentence. And I, you know, it's hard for me to believe that one sentence would cost an extra hundred dollars, so. Are you comfortable and at some point, Tessa, in the next few months, calling the Gazette and see, you know, what it is? And maybe even asking them without that language that that's required. What would have been the 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 fees? Because I I think we need to think about maybe raising them again. I don't know.
Yes, I feel comfortable. I can call them and ask if they have a breakout, breakdown of if it's by word or if it's by line, how they do it.
Okay, yeah, I think it's by word or letter, maybe. So, okay, and I think, I don't know if it's on a new business or old business, but Jeff, you wanted something else on the agenda? Is it new business or old business?
She would. I, it's it's both.
Okay, then let Mark, let's get to that. I think we've exhausted anything else, so let's, I I think you had something about how we write decisions generically?
No, it's it's specifically if if see, we're a three-member board, and in the case of variances in special permits, that means that and maybe even other things, in in order to issue a variance or issue a special permit, we need to vote unanimously.
Yes.
And if we, if we fail to achieve that super majority, then we cannot issue the special permit or the variance.
Yes.
And there was a a suggestion made at the last meeting that if such a case arose where we had a two to one vote to favor one, one opposed, say, or even if it was, even if it was two opposed, two opposed and one in favor, still couldn't grant it. But what if it was just left sitting past the ninety day period for action? And we we simply couldn't get, couldn't get three members to to vote on any kind of a decision. It would be approved constructively.
Correct.
And it's it's it's, so that suggestion was made at the last meeting that that might be an approach for us to take. I had kind of anticipated that. I really didn't think it would happen, but it it had occurred to me. And I did ask a couple of municipal attorneys about that even before the last meeting. And 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 their response was, no, that shouldn't happen. That's not the decision of of the board. The board has failed to achieve a super majority. So it it can't award the permit, and and the permit's denied, and the decision needs to be written that way. And in the minutes when Donna was there, some of the minutes I had up and highlighted, she said in that case, the decision would be written by one or both of the of the dissenting members. But that there would be a decision. And and both attorneys were were surprised at the notion that 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 would happen.
I'm sorry, what would happen?
That that a decision would be allowed to be approved constructively that way.
Well, yeah, but we're not talking about that, are we?
That's what I'm talking about. I'm talking about what we do in those instances.
Are you, you're not, you're not supportive of that notion, I assume?
No, absolutely not.
Why are we talking about it?
Well, so I guess one question.
It was because it was proposed.
Well, I would only do that if we all agreed.
You know, so I guess I've got one question. And so it it this relates to matters of conscience, and it relates to you know, some of the limitations of a three-person board and and what 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 the state defines as a super majority. Is there a chance we can have this be a four-person board?
Well, I've already, I've already suggested that it go to a five-person board.
No, zoning boards of appeal can only be three or.
Three or five.
Three or five, so so it could go to five.
I am in favor of going to five for sure. There's no question about it.
Yeah, I agree, yeah. Because that would make it so that some, you know, the P, anybody who disagreed could vote their conscience. But if if there was the remaining super majority that that that, you know, we could conduct business and wouldn't be in sort of perpetual limbo.
Right.
Exactly. You have to have four out of five in a five-member board.
Right. Yeah.
Well, I I'm certainly, I strongly believe we need to have a five-person board.
Even with a five-member board, though, you can still have, you can still have three in favor and and two opposed.
I understand.
You have a simple majority there, but you still can't, still can't award the permit.
Of course, of course, you know, but it it does make it so that, you know, I think the pressure's not on any one given person, right? You know, so that there's, you know, it it does take two to. it it does take two to flip it to no, and so that, you know, if somebody disagrees, if then there's, and and there are two people who disagree, you know, it's not specifically on either of them, if one person disagrees, that, you know, it's not the whole weight of everyone coming down on them. So I think that it makes a lot of sense to have it, um, you know, as as a larger board, um, I I I really like that idea.
Uh, yeah, I do, too, but of course, the problem is finding find, we have, I know Herb would step up as a a real member, as a full voting member, but we still need one more person, and until we find one more person, and then we have, and then we change our bylaws, too, but problem is without five bodies, why would we want to change the bylaws if if there's not five bodies? But once we have five bodies, I would certainly be uh, in favor of changing the bylaws to a five person board rather than a a three and one alternate.
What's what's quorum on a five person board, is it three people, four people?
I thought that was uh, I thought it was three, a majority.
Three is formed to to have, you know, just to have a meeting, but if you're working with a special permit, um, you have to have four.
You have to have four of them as as a quorum, all right.
Well, 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 i- if you're just having a meeting and you're doing education and guidance and and, you know, o- other topics like that, you can do it with three, I believe.
But if you're voting, you need four.
Right, but if if you have a special permit, you you've got to have four.
Yeah, okay. That's fine.
Or or you could use the the um, potentially use the Mullen rule and have the missing member m- make it up, I believe. Uh, I have to check on that, yes, if you have a member miss a meeting, they can read a transcript or see a tape of it and uh, and and catch up. So I think we could still have a meeting with three, as long as the we can still do a special permit with three, as long as the fourth member um, made the meeting up before the following meeting.
Interesting.
Yeah.
So uh, I guess I have a simple question, because I don't quite understand the process totally being not that new, but new enough. Uh, what what does happen when you're at an impasse?
Well.
How does it proceed?
Well, the interesting thing about it is someone has to move, and that someone has to second, so that that's interesting, because, you know, uh, hypothetically, if there's a three person voting board, even though there's an alternate as well, um, you know, someone, I imagine, in the majority would move, and then someone would second, and then you'd call the vote. And then the question, then the question is, is you couldn't do it any other way, because you couldn't do it the opposite way, because no one's gonna second, and no one's required to second. Right? Uh, so Jeff moved to deny, and no one seconded. I guess, you know, I I think you gotta have a second to to move, you can't move forward while someone moving and someone seconding it, you can't move forward. Maybe that's where uh, maybe that's where you have a uh, it it we, okay, let's try the next meeting, and then the next meeting, and then all of a sudden there's a constructive grant. But it it is true, you can't do business unless someone moves and someone seconds. I don't think there's any dis, I don't think there's any disagreement, Jeff, do you disagree with that?
No, and 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 the the whole point of what I'm saying is, if if that was deliberately not done with the idea of of running the clock out and having a a project constructively approved, um, then I I I would object to that type of 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 action by the board, and that's that's why I'm bringing this up. That I I think that that even if if there's not unanimity, there should still be a decision and a decision made and voted on and a decision written within the time limits.
Mm-hmm.
And the two municipal attorneys that I consulted, um, both agreed that that is the way it should go.
Now, who are these lawyers?
Uh, Bob Ritchie and Donna McNichol.
Oh, Donna, too?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I said that.
Well, Donna even said it in the minute of of, I think, the December meeting, she said that the the dissenting member or members, you know, if if the decision was not to award, say, a special permit.
Right.
Then the decision should be written by the dissenting member or members. But it 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 should, it should embrace all sides of the of the issue. And the findings shouldn't be just the findings of of the the non supportive member, but it should be all the findings.
I would agree.
Right.
I would agree on that. I mean, a- a- as chair, I'm not comfortable letting the time run out unless we all agree that that's what we should do, I I because if I did that against the will of anybody, I would then resign when it runs out, so you know, I, you know, I don't, I mean, I see that in national politics, I see those games being played, but I just don't agree with them, but and if I, if I engaged in those games, I would resign after I so engaged.
Captain, so so discuss to yourself.
Well, I I I don't think I could effectively be a chair anymore.
Yeah, yeah, all right, well, I I think I've made my point on that, and it's, you know, just how we handle those situations.
Okay, all right.
I'm not technically connected with any particular case.
No, I understand, I understand. All right, is there any old business that we haven't discussed?
Chair, I I forgot to ask to have it put on the agenda, but I wondered if we could briefly touch base on the all boards meeting since the date was changed?
Yes, what is the new date, Tessa?
It's February sixteenth, which is a Tuesday, and Andy wrote back and did say that he could be there for the first half an hour. And I do have an update on um, from Linda about how the meeting is run.
Okay, go ahead.
So, uh, so I talked to Linda, and she said there, the select board is the one who's running, facilitating the meeting, but there are no designated slots. But if you wanted, if the ZBA did want to go earlier on in the meeting, that the suggestion was just to write to the chair of the select board and just give them a heads up that there's a time constraint.
Can you do that for us, because I know I cannot make a Tuesday night beginning on the sixteenth between now and May? Because I have commitments at the University of Massachusetts every Tuesday night.
And I, yes, so when my commitment starts at seven on Tuesday, so I can make the six thirty to seven.
Yeah.
Um, but I I, yes.
Mine mine starts at seven as well, um.
So Linda's suggestion was just that if Andy, if you're willing to be that person, um, if you wouldn't mind just writing to the chairs like board.
Of course, I absolutely, I'll say, I'll send a quick note, yeah, of course.
Yeah, that's a good note, and that that should be fine, because there are no time slots. And the summary, what Linda said was like two to three minutes, so it's very, very brief.
Absolutely, piece of cake.
Thank you, Andy, I appreciate it.
No problem.
And 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 you know, it's during the academic year, I'm you know, I think it believe, I think it starts on the sixteenth, so I mean, actually, it starts on February first, but I don't have the, for me, it starts on the sixteenth, so I'm I'm not gonna be available on Tuesday nights from seven to nine o'clock. Okay, um, any other new business or old business?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Two items that came up earlier in in the meeting during the minutes. One was the um, the the discussion about what Donna originally said about associate members and how how they may uh, participate, she said in in the meeting minutes that the only way that they could participate is if they were originally designated at the beginning of a special permit or 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 a variance, and that um, y- you couldn't bring in an associate member midway if somebody got sick or or resigned or something. Um, I I, that's not my understanding of it, and I had a conversation with Bob Ritchie, and then Bob and and Donna talked. And they agreed that, say, Herb, uh, if if he had attended uh, all of the the meetings and hearings, could be dropped in at any point. Um, I mean, that's really the purpose of an associate, you know, not just in the beginning when you can foresee it, but unforeseen circumstances during the midway through permit. So, um, you know, it, Herb, you're not wasting your time by by attending these these meetings and and listening in, because you you could be used at any, at any point. So I I just wanted to clarify that, and I and and Donna agrees with that now.
Okay, good, excellent, so we have a meeting on the minds, and that's great.
Yeah, and and one other, one other thing that came up was um, the business about signing extensions for special permits and decisions.
Go ahead.
And and it 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 says that um, signed uh, agreements to extend, um, and then those agreements being filed with the town clerk
Yeah.
um, need to occur anytime the statutory time limits um, are to be exceeded.
Yes.
So um, that's that that's kind of a matter of interpretation, but the the statute says that that act, within sixty five days of receiving an application, say, for a special permit, we shall hold a public hearing.
Yes.
So if 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 we hold that public hearing on the fifty fifth day, and then um, we wish to keep it open to our next meeting, which is a month from from then, we will have exceeded the sixty five days in which to hold it. So I think in those kind of situations, when we're taking that public hearing beyond that sixty five day period, we need to obtain one of those one of those signed um, agreements.
That's been my understanding always, yes.
So if if we had the, if we had the public hearing, um, say, um, thirty days from the application, and then we were going to continue it to say forty five days, we may not need that, because we're still within the sixty five days to hold that hearing.
Yes.
So, and the same thing with the decision, once the ninety day clock starts, if that starts running out, then we 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 need to have those filed, but we don't need to file for all the meetings that we have during the ninety day period, because they're still within the statutory period.
That has been my understanding always.
Okay.
Even though there was some disagreement, but I went along with it anyway, because I didn't think it mattered. Okay, but that has been my understanding always.
Okay, that's that's it.
All right, um, we have, we have scheduled our next meeting, uh, which is February eighteenth at seven o'clock, and I, Steve and Megan, you're still here, you want to be second on the agenda? You will be after after the minutes are approved of this night's meeting. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn? Don't move.
Wait, may I just actually ask, I'm so sorry, may I ask one question, um, before, could I just clarify with with Steve and Megan, that did did you mean to be second on the agenda after the the after the applicant who went tonight? Or did you want to be sort of like the, right after the the posting of the minutes? I'd like to discuss the minutes.
I'd like to go after you approve the other people, and we uh, are gonna be eight months into this process for no reason, that's what I'm looking for.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, okay. Okay, so that's how I'll write the agenda up, um. All right, okay, you have a motion, Jeff moved to adjourn the meeting, is there a second?
A second from Andy.
Okay, uh, any discussion? Okay, uh, what is your vote on this uh, motion, Jeff Lacy? What is your vote on this motion, Andy Bird?
Aye.
What is your vote, Chuck Damari, on this motion?
Aye.
The meeting is hereby adjourned, and what is that, uh, eight thirty five? PM.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone, see you later, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Take care.